At this time, I would like to call to order the City of Bowie regular city council meeting Monday, September 15th, 2025. In council chambers, it is now 8:03 PM. Would everyone who's able, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to say good evening to everyone here and online. At this time, I'd like to turn to the city clerk to make sure that we have a quorum for the record.
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum for this evening. In council chambers, we have council member staff, Mayor Protem Wolfley, Mayor Adams, council member Brady, and council member Truesdale.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, I will entertain any agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Hearing none, we will move to citizen participation. Thank you, city clerk. Mr. Christopher Dwyer.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. I just want to take a moment to thank you all for allowing me to come speak today. It truly is a blessing that we're able to speak to our leadership and that we're taken seriously and we're considered whenever we come up here to take these comments. So some of you may know me and some of you may not. My name is Christopher Dwyer and I am the executive director of the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts right here in Bowie, Maryland. And I just wanted to take a few moments to talk a little bit about Bowie and Bowie excellence and how important it is that we keep the cultural arts alive in this city. And there's no better place than at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. Now, there were a lot of people that came before me, a lot of people that really worked to get the place built. A lot of them were part of a group called the Bowie Regional Arts Vision Association. A lot of folks from the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, a lot of people from the City of Bowie, a lot of people from Prince George's County Public Schools, all helped, came together to make this facility a reality back in 2004. Now, recently, we just had a celebration of our 20-year anniversary and many of you were there to help celebrate along with several county council members, along with our state senator. It is clear to a lot of people in this room, a lot of people perhaps at home, a lot of people who are not in this room, that the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts is an important piece of the fabric, not only of Bowie, but also of Prince George's County Public Schools and also the county in general. So those people that came before us, it's good to pay them homage and remember our roots. I will say, they created an MOU between all the stakeholders that helped run the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. And there was one slight flaw in that MOU. And that's that the budget did not account for inflation. So right now, the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts is under the exact same budget that it was in 2004. And that is a little bit problematic. A couple of things that I can remind you of. In 2004, minimum wage was around $8, $9. And now it's almost double that. And we should be championing the growth of people so that they can make a living wage. However, the Bowie Center's budget has not been able to grow when it comes to that. And there are several needs that the Bowie Center has. You know, we need to upgrade our theater technology, move from incandescent lighting to the LED lighting. We have a roof issue. When it rains really hard, it rains indoors. I will say that we had the Miss Africa USA pageant a couple of weeks ago in which county executive Brave Boy and council member Blague were in attendance. We had a big storm. They saw it rain inside the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. And I do everything I can to get it patched, but you know, it doesn't always materialize the way that I would like. We also have HVAC needs and we have a deep cleaning need for the front of the building and things like that. So I'm here today to implore the city council and you, Mr. Mayor, and anyone else who is listening to consider a 25% increase in the annual operating funding for the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. Now, I'm not going to get into specifically what those numbers are. It may be public knowledge. You may be able to look it up on the internet, but I don't want to give those numbers out here. I don't know if my employer would appreciate that. So I'm going to just ask for your consideration that when budget season comes around, perhaps it's always budget season, I'm not exactly sure, but when budget season comes around, that you consider a 25% increase for the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts from the city side. And with that suggestion and that hope, we could perhaps go to our other stakeholders and see if they are willing to consider a 25% increase from their end. So like I mentioned, you know, we're living in a time where cultural expression is sometimes questionable. And it's really important and it's really easy to be proud to be in Prince George's County and to be proud to be a part of Bowie and not forget where we've come from. And the place to do that, the place where bread is broken and culture is explored, is at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. We should be proud to have it. We should take care of it. And I know that everyone here cares. I know that you all care. And I think we can do this. And lastly, I know I need to move on. I just want to remember Mary Neuser's name, who was on the wall just behind us in the lobby, and the effort she put in to make this place, to make the Bowie Center a reality and to have this place. I'm going to do this for her and I want to do this for the next 20 years. And I thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. We will now move on to presentations. The Diversity Committee will give a presentation on Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor Protem and Mr. Mayor. My name is Kevin Lopez Cruz and it is my privilege to present this year's Hispanic Heritage Month report on behalf of the Diversity Committee. Since 1968, the period from September 15th to October 15th has been federally recognized by presidential proclamation as Hispanic Heritage Month. This period honors the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans with ancestry from Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and Spanish-speaking Caribbean nations. This period also coincides with the independence anniversaries of countries like Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador, Costa Rica, Nicaragua, and Chile. We honor figures like Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, the first Hispanic woman to serve on the United States Supreme Court, Ellen Ochoa, the first Hispanic woman astronaut to go to space, and Cesar Chavez, whose leadership transformed the labor rights movement. There are numerous local leaders whose work continues to uplift and serve our community, showing that meaningful change is possible. Samantha Howard, former Latino Affairs Liaison for Prince George's County, elevated Latino visibility and engagement in county affairs in unprecedented ways. Her close associate, U.S. Army veteran and entrepreneur Dr. Jennifer Rios, Chair of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Prince George's County, advocates for the growth and sustainability of Hispanic-owned businesses in our county. We honor Delegate Ashanti Martinez, Chair of the Legislative Latino Caucus in the Maryland General Assembly. His advocacy for public health and representation strengthens the fabric of Prince George's County and the state of Maryland at large. We also recognize Delegate Denny Taveras, the first Latina elected to the Prince George's County Council and current representative of District 47B in the Maryland House of Delegates. Her legislative priorities and victories reflect her broad experience in healthcare, equity, housing, climate action, and public safety. Hispanic Heritage Month reminds us not only to celebrate past achievements, but also the ongoing efforts to build a more equitable and inclusive community. The City of Bowie's Diversity Committee is proud to honor these stories and celebrate them. On September 23rd, we will host a Hispanic Heritage Month event featuring a panel discussion with local Hispanic leaders and opportunities for community dialogue. We invite all residents to join us at this event to engage, learn, and celebrate together. On behalf of the Diversity Committee, thank you for your time, your support, and your continued commitment to honoring and uplifting the stories that shape who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to city boards and committees. Is Mr. Robert Day here? Mr. Day.
Yes, sir.
Could you raise your right hand for me?
Mayor, before swearing in, we need a motion to appoint him.
Oh, I thought we had. I'll entertain a motion to...
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the appointment of Robert Day to the Economic Development Committee as a regular member for a two-year term.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, do we need to do a swearing in? Okay.
Now we go to swearing in.
I'm teasing now. Please, raise your right hand. You can all come in. I state your name.
I, Robert Day.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Regular.
Regular member of the Economic Development Committee.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You don't get away that easily. There you go. Thank you for your volunteering and support our city. Thank you, pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to council announcements. At this point, though we've recognized it across the country, I'd like for us to take just a brief moment in remembrance of 9/11 and for all those who suffered then and continue to suffer. One moment, please. Hey, thank you so very much. I will now open the floor to announcements from council members. Anyone having any announcements they'd like to make? Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce and make note of the fact that instead of being at home and taking my wife out for dinner to celebrate her birthday, I'm sitting here in the council chamber. So I would like to wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthdays for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And happy birthday, Kathy Brady. Just want to send a shout out to all of District 3 and the beautiful people in Bowie as a whole and the wonderful people that was at the festival on this past weekend, the International Festival. It was really great. Didn't have time to be there right at the beginning, but it was a great turnout. And whatever the staff did to give us that good weather, thank you so much. And speaking of international, I just want to give a shout out to Paulette Mapuma, who she is a woman in Bowie that works that works with the Maryland Women Business incubator that we have in the town center. She sold 11,500 board games with the one aim pointed to African studies. So African education, rather. And so just want to give a shout out to that whole, you know, that whole initiatives. And we have great people in our city. And thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Endemamadu.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by saying good evening colleagues and city staff and a wonderful evening to the amazing and wonderful residents of District 4. My brief announcement is I received a couple of different emails over the weekend in regards to different things such as education and traffic stops for Ann Arbor and Mount Oak. Those emails will be forwarded to staff for further follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, we will now move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And we will now go to the consent agenda and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. We will now go into the old business and the adoption of ordinance 0925, an ordinance of the council of the City of Bowie, Maryland, to authorize and empower the City of Bowie to sell and issue from time to time upon its full faith and credit one or more series of 1A general obligation bonds and general obligation bond anticipation notes, each in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $33 million. And two, the general obligation refunding bonds, subject to the limitations provided for herein and proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purpose of financing, reimbursing or refinancing costs. And I will turn this over, if we would like, to the city staff to address.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Mathieu, the finance director will take it from here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. H. Byron Matthews, Finance Director. The purpose of the ordinance this evening is to authorize the city's issuance of general obligation bonds in one or more series up to a maximum of $33 million. The funds will be used to finance, reimburse, or refinance costs associated with the new ice arena, the water distribution system recapitalization, the water plant, the sewer main rehabilitation, and the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Flexibility in the funding. The ordinance defines what's qualified as cost of the projects. The bonds proceeds may be reallocated among these projects. Any funding of projects not listed in the ordinance will require an amendment by council to approve. Governance and oversight. Due to the 2019 Charter Amendment, Section 5.8, details of the bonds, the terms, the interest rates, the maturities, et cetera, will be set by council resolution and not by this ordinance. This gives the city flexibility to position itself for any change in the market conditions. Bond sale expectations. Given the size of the issuance, the bonds are expected to be sold via competitive public sale, although it's not mandated by this ordinance. Debt security and tax impact. The bonds will be backed by the city's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power. If the issuer revenue and cost-saving measures do not fully cover the cost of the bonds, the city will need to raise taxes in order to meet the bond obligations. Additional financing tools, as the mayor indicated earlier, bond anticipation notes will be used, up to $33 million in short-term notes used during an interim financing if market conditions suggest. They'll be repaid when we issue the bonds at a long-term maturity. Refunding bonds can be used to up to 130% of the refunding bond principal. Use of the refinancing the outstanding bonds if the interest rate or construction or reconstruction benefits arrives. I wanted to introduce our guests this evening, Mayor and council. Funk and Bolton have been with the city for a very long time. They have represented us as our bond counsel and provided us legal services for many of our bond issuances. And tonight, the representative for both, no, Funk and Bolton is Lindsay Raider Esquire. She's on my left here. And our financial advisor, Davenport and Company, has been with the city for a very long time too and have provided us excellent information regarding the issuance of our bonds, investigation of any litigation that we've had, drafting of the preliminary official statements, and providing the credit presentation and according to the credit rating policies. The representative for Davenport is Jennifer Dyson Dirksen. I just have a problem with that name. I apologize. So Mayor, basically, that's, and council, that's why we're here this evening. They're here to answer any of your questions that you may have about the bond issuance, where we're going to go, how we're going to do it, and what we should do. And I'll turn it over to them. Mayor, we also need to have a public hearing for...
Right, we will.
Okay.
Okay. I was going to ask.
I guess we could do the public hearing and then...
I'm going to open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Do we have any speakers?
No, Mayor, we did not have anyone signed up tonight and no comments were received.
Okay, I will declare the public hearing closed at this time now. Council members, I guess my first three questions would be those that Mr. Matthews stated. Where are we going? Where are we? How will we get there?
Mayor and council members, Lindsay Raider. It's nice to be before you again. The plan is at this time, based on the current capital markets, which Ms. Dirksen can speak to in more detail if you'd like her to do so, is not to use the bond anticipation note interim financing authority, but to go straight to long-term general obligation bonds. But when we amended the city charter in 2019 to provide more flexibility in the procedures the council follows for authorizing bonds, bond anticipation notes, or refunding bonds, including to provide that details could be determined or provided for by resolution, except for the details set forth in Charter Section 58, which must be provided for by ordinance. That gives us more flexibility. And if the market were to change between now and when we plan to come before you with a resolution before the preliminary official statement is released to the public, we could transition to bond anticipation notes if we need to do so. Also, unlike in 2019, the last time the city issued general obligation debt, we include refunding authority in this ordinance, which means that if the capital markets move in the right direction in the future before any long-term bonds are paid off, you can move more quickly to issue refunding bonds to take advantage of either a drop in the interest rate or if the debt needs to be restructured and to determine the details at that time by resolution instead of an ordinance, which of course, a resolution is introduced and adopted in a single session.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any questions? That was good. Oh, go right ahead. I didn't see your light.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question on the bond anticipation notes. You're expecting that we won't use those? Is there a particular reason for that at the moment? I would think in a declining market that maybe you would want to, but maybe not.
Oh, okay.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Dirksen from Davenport and Company. Yes, the expectation at this point is to go to market with a competitive public sale, long-term sale. Rates have actually come down over the last two months between 35 and 45 basis points. So, and we're, the Fed is expected to lower rates again this week as well. So, you know, when you issue a bond anticipation note, you know, while, you do take interest rate risk that, you know, interest rates could go up during that time that the bond anticipation note is out before you issue that long-term debt. It could go down as well. But given that you're ready for your projects, you know what your projects are, you're ready to finance them, and there's appetite in the market in terms of underwriters that want to bid on highly-rated bonds, we think that moving forward with a competitive public sale makes the most sense.
Thank you. The follow-on to that is, so after we're done with this ordinance, I believe we have a 35-day or 45-day waiting period, is that right?
31 days.
31 days.
Before the ordinance is effective, correct.
Okay. Can you sketch out what the schedule looks like from here and the courses of action that we need to take with that 31-day waiting period? And then your ability subsequent to that? And then your return to us?
So after that 30... Sorry, after that 31 days has expired, we plan to come back to the council with a resolution that will authorize the preliminary official statement, which is the disclosure document, provide for the public sale at competitive bid. It will have a copy of the substantially final form of the notice of sale attached thereto. It will include a preliminary amortization schedule, just as we did in 2019 with the ordinance. A lot of the things that you saw in the 2019 ordinance will be, and I realize not all of the council members were here in 2019, will be in the resolution that we bring back to you later in October. After that resolution is adopted, then the preliminary official statement will be released to the market. The preliminary schedule now calls for the bond sale to be held on November 4th. In 2019, the council delegated to the city manager the authority to fix the final details of the bonds based on the sale results. And at least our initial working structure was that we anticipated the same structure here. With a public sale at competitive bid, the only thing that the bidders can bid on are the interest rates for each maturity. So you're not giving a lot of discretion up by allowing the city manager... So there, you're not giving a lot of discretion up by allowing the city manager to make the award by an order of award. And then we're currently looking to close around November nineteenth.
And do we, we don't anticipate laddering any of these, correct? It would all be just a single, single sale?
We're anticipating that for the ice arena, it'll be a taxable series of bonds, and we're going through the tax diligence project for the water and sewer, that we would hopefully be able to issue a tax-exempt series, which of course tend to bear lower interest rates. So there would be two separate series. And as we're going through the tax diligence process, we'll determine whether we need to ladder any of the maturities of the bond issue in the tax-exempt series based on the useful lives of what is being financed.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for adoption of ordinance zero-nine-twenty-five, an ordinance of the council of the city of Bowie to authorize and empower the city of Bowie to sell an issue from time to time upon full faith and credit, one or more serious general obligation bonds, et cetera.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move on to new business. And we will turn this over as we are talking about the Bowie Business Incubator to our economic development to city manager.
Yes, sir. So we have the executive director of the Bowie Business Innovation Center standing in front of you, ready to give you an update on the latest and greatest activities at that organization. June?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Adams, Mayor Pro Tim Wolfley, and esteemed city council members. I'm June Evans. I am the executive director of the Bowie Business Innovation Center. As everyone knows, that's Bowie BIC. And I'm here tonight to give you the end-year report for 2025. Now, I hope this is the actual clicker. We'll try it and see. Okay. Does it? No, maybe? There we go. Sorry. We're gonna, I'm gonna introduce my team, our board members, give you an overview of the Bowie BIC, our programs, talk some stats and impact being made, and share some updates on the signature program that you guys are familiar with, where we received the congressional earmark about three years ago, and give you a little update on that as well. Meet the team. As I introduce myself, I'm June Evans, the executive director. We have three, there's three full-time staff members working at the Bowie BIC, one half-staff person that's dedicated to the Center of Excellence for ADA Government Contracting, and we have two consultants that help us run our accelerators and many programs that we offer throughout the year. We have six board members, and I think you might see a couple of familiar faces up there. But nonetheless, we have six board members that govern us and help us to achieve our The Bowie BIC, we are a business accelerator, and our, we do have a small incubator. We're located on Bowie State University's campus. Our primary focus is on our existing businesses and really helping them identify those pain points, build those growth strategies, and be able to get over those humps so that they can scale. We use our accelerators to educate our businesses on becoming bankable. We equip our businesses on how to pursue government contracts, and we just elevate business performance in all areas, right? That is what we are here to do. Right now, we run six ongoing programs, flagship programs throughout the year. Most of our programs, we offer multiple times throughout the year. As you can see, we do have our signature Innovate Bowie program that we have now decided to launch on global entrepreneur, during Global Entrepreneurship Week, so you will see that this November coming up, we'll do Innovate Bowie 2025. We have our ADA Accelerator, which is our longest-standing accelerator, actually, and our most, most popular accelerator program, where we continue to bring in government contractors that are ADA certified. We literally help them accelerate using their ADA certification so that they can really get that maximum out of the nine years that they're in the program, to really leverage that ADA certification for greater success. It is our ADA Accelerator, which was the foundation for the reason why we were chosen to offer the Center of Excellence for ADA Government Contracting. It was designed to use those best practices and the success of that program to actually expand in the government contracting space. And that expansion is the partnerships with ADA firms, with our HBCUs, helping them build capacity so they too can take advantage of federal contracts. We have our Capital Accelerator, which is our second-most popular accelerator, which focuses on helping our businesses access capital. This year, we worked closely with FSC First, who is the funder of this program, to kind of say, how do we really, you know, use the Capital Accelerator to really help our businesses, our local businesses here grow? And so we decided to focus now on micro lending. And so the Capital Accelerator is, it's going to still be that five-week accelerator program, but now we're attaching one-on-one coaching and helping those businesses actually apply for micro loans that may be able to help build their business. We have our Open Door Program, which we offer multiple times throughout the month. Now, this is a free program to the public. It is, we call it Open Doors because we literally think it's, it's how you get into the Bowie BIC, right? It's typically the introduction to us. We offer free one-on-one consulting services for our businesses, and we work with them to really kind of formulate their questions when they're meeting with the consultant or the subject matter expert, so that it helps them move the needle and that they don't waste time. That's how we're able to really use that as a free program to get businesses here and the help that they need. We recently used the concept of Open Doors to kind of expand into we consider our Bowie BIC on the move. And so we've partnered with the two county council members that kind of cover the greater Bowie area, which is District Four and District Six. And so they're using the same topics and subject matter experts and bringing them to their community. So it's, so now, so not only is it just come in for forty-five minutes and meet with the one-on-one person, but then that same individual is also creating workshops and going out and, and working with the businesses in the communities. And then we also launched a new accelerator in FY twenty-five, which is called our Growth Labs. Now, our Growth Labs were designed to, to also incorporate that intensive training with that one-on-one support. It's one thing to get the knowledge, and we, as a business owner, you get a lot of information, but there's always a huge gap between getting the knowledge and applying it. And so our Growth Lab is a new accelerator that we launched in FY twenty-five in support with TD charitable foundations to kind of bridge that gap, to offer the training, but to also follow it up with that one-on-one support. So we're excited to know that we're continuing to grow. Now we're gonna talk about Bowie BIC by the numbers for FY twenty-five. Out of our accelerators, as I've mentioned to you, the accelerators that we offer, we graduated one hundred and sixty-nine businesses. We have seven businesses that operate as we consider Bowie BIC members. They are either tenants that have office space at Bowie State University with us, or they're what we consider affiliate members. And so because space is limited where we are at Bowie State, it's our affiliate membership that is really more prominent than our actual tenant membership. When you look at the, and most of our numbers, like revenue generated, come from our accelerator participants, because those are the businesses that we have that intense, you know, connection with, that we work with intently. A lot of them are government contractors, so when you see that the revenue that in totality of the businesses that we work with is seventy, ninety-five million, it's because they are, they're mostly government contractors, and they are using what we're giving them, and they are applying it, and they are rocking and rolling. When you talk about businesses served, the eight hundred and ninety-five businesses served are businesses that we directly work with. And we do have resource partners, like the Small Business Development Center, the Maryland Minority, I mean, the Maryland Women's Business Center, which are our partners, and we love them dearly, because what we try to do is build an ecosystem with the Bowie BIC. And as I mentioned to you, our sweet spot, our existing businesses and helping them scale and grow. So a lot of our resource partners help for those businesses that may not be there yet, right? Or maybe they're, they're trying to start their business. We don't want to turn them away, right? Because we know they belong here, and we know that we need them in the ecosystem. So having that connection with the resource partner to take different, different aspects of the journey, I would say, as you're growing your business, is, is, is very beneficial for us. But when you look at eight hundred and ninety-five businesses served, that is the businesses that the Bowie BIC itself, through the programs that we're offering, we have served eight hundred and ninety-five businesses this year. Out of that eight hundred and ninety-five, three hundred and thirty-six of them are Prince George's County-based, and a hundred and twenty-nine are the city of Bowie-based. Partnerships are key, and we truly understand this. We are so grateful for the city of Bowie and what, what the city of Bowie has done for us and allow us to pour back into the small business community. But we do have partnerships that really do help us continue the work that we're doing and allow us to grow. And I want to recognize those partnerships, and they are with the Prince George's County Council, Capital One, FSC First, TD Bank Foundation, and the Capital Readiness Program. And in FY twenty-five, FY twenty-five, I'm sorry, in FY twenty-six, because we're now in FY twenty-six, when you look at the partnerships and the funding that we are, that we're generating from support of the resources because of what we're doing, that totals up to three hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. Just looking again at our FY twenty-six partnerships, because we know that they are crucial in helping us to grow. The city of Bowie is a partnership, and so we are now getting ready to go into another year, and thank you so much for another year of funding for FY twenty-six. We have a partnership with Bowie State University with the Center of Excellence, and we're continuing to work with our HBCUs. And so now, we have twelve HBCU partners that we're working with under the Center of Excellence and helping them grow and develop and build capacity. We have a partnership with the Capital Readiness Program, which is with the Capital Region Minority Supplier Development Council. We have a partnership with them, and that is how we were able to first kick off our Growth Lab through that partnership. And with the success of that partnership, we received additional funding from the TD Bank Foundation to continue the work and the effort that we're doing. And the partnership with Capital One, again, for twenty-six, they are still supporting our ADA Accelerator program. They still believe in us. They still, they're so pleased of the work that we're doing in the businesses, their growing, coming out of it, even in this, in this political climate where everything is kind of unknown and uncertain, we are still moving strong and getting ready to launch Cohort thirteen. So if we break it down a little bit by our accelerator programs, out of the ADA Accelerator for this year, we worked with three Bowie businesses, and their total revenues was seven point three million dollars, and they employ six employees. With our Capital Accelerator this year, we worked with twelve Bowie-based businesses. Those twelve totaled up to three point two million dollars of revenue, and they have thirty-four employees. Our Growth Lab, we worked with three Bowie businesses, which totaled up to one million dollars' worth of revenue and three employees. I think I mixed one. With our Innovate Bowie twenty twenty-four, which we focused on AI technology and, and what AI can do to help our small business community be more productive and efficient, we had seventy-two businesses or people that registered as a business or could be looking to start a business, but seventy-two of them were here in the city of Bowie. And with our Open Doors, as I've mentioned, which goes on multiple times throughout the month, we have worked with forty-one Bowie-based businesses. Now, I'll share a little bit of updates with our Center of Excellence for ADA Government Contracting. And with, this is, we're in our third year of this program. We do have two more years to go. We did receive a two-year no-cost extension on this program, but we have completed two cohorts. What we did was, with, under the Center of Excellence for ADA Government Contracting, we do offer the best practices and workshops and trainings to help ADA firms grow in general. But we have a signature piece to that, which we call the Federal Contracting Collaborative Accelerator. And those are individuals, those are businesses, let's say, are HBCUs that have said, yes, I am interested in partnering up together so that we can pursue government contracts. And so with that said, that's a little bit more work, work there, but we have completed phase one of two cohorts. We are now working in phase two, which is the ongoing consultation coaching aspect of it, which actually works with the entities and pairing together and partnering to actually pursue government contracts. We are working with coaches, work with teams, to identify opportunities and develop those procurement pipelines. But other activities that we do under the Center of Excellence for ADA Government Contracting that works with ADA's is we partner with SBA to put on quarterly business development workshop series at all levels of the ADA. So from, I just got my ADA, to I'm at that midpoint with my ADA, to, okay, now I'm looking, I'm about to exit with my ADA. Oh, and even, I'm interested in ADA. So we did that in FY twenty-five, and we worked with seven hundred and fifty-five participants that actually went through that. And we continue to do mentor protege training, because mentor-protege relationships are very important in the government contracting space. And so we continue to get a lot of businesses that are interested in mentor-protege programs and doing business with the government, and out of that, a hundred and fifty-nine businesses went through that. So that wraps up the year-end report of the Bowie BIC. And as I mentioned before, we are just so grateful and honored to be a part of the city of Bowie and just hearing and knowing that the city is supporting all of these efforts to help our businesses. I am very confident that in years to come, every business is gonna be knocking at the city of Bowie to be here, because where there's support, businesses want to be. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask you, with the recent cuts, and again, thank you for the good work you do.
Thank you.
I've had the privilege of working with the Bowie BIC and assisting with some things along the way, so I know the great work that you're doing. But I would like to know, with the cuts that have gone on in the federal government, are you anticipating, or have you seen a growth in those individuals looking to start their own businesses with the new fiscal year?
So, it's kind of, the cuts as far as employee cuts for the federal government, absolutely yes. I thought, I didn't know if you were talking about contracts, cuts with contracts, but no, absolutely. Now is the time where you have those federal employees with, we maybe consider a lot of them knowledge workers. Now is the time for those knowledge workers that may be ready or seasoned to take that knowledge and turn that into a business. This is where we're going, and, and this is, you know, it's, it's, it's almost like a disruption, right? That you, you see disruption in technology and innovation all the time. It's kind of weird to kind of put federal government and innovation in the same sentence, but it's there, because this is a disruption, and it's time for innovation. And yes, that's what I'm telling people that are knowledge workers, that have been laid off and... off and riffed in the federal government, is that now it's time to get innovative and it's time to start your own business. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman DuFour?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation this evening. Thanks for all the good work you do for the community and our business entities here. Following up on the mayor's question with regards to employee cuts, I know there was a reduction in the target goal for 8A small business type for the, for this administration. Have you seen a commensurate cut or impact on, on the people you're working with? Have they found it more difficult now?
So, that's a very good question. We didn't know what to expect when this, when, when everything started to happen, especially with us working with a lot of federal government contractors. But the reality hap, is that 8A firms are still getting government contracts. I literally got a text today from an 8A firm that we've worked with thanking us, they got a fifty-million-dollar contract. So what we tell the businesses that we work with is that the information that we give them is priceless. It's not gonna, it's, it's, the government is always going to buy. Now, how you develop your procurement pipeline, now that may be different. How you change your business development strategy, that might be different. But the reality is, the government is always going to buy. And so now is the time, if, you know, to rethink your strategy, figure out who's buying and figure out if what you offer, you may have been working with one agency all along for this time, but maybe what you've been selling can work for another agency. But that's, and we, what we found is that that information is resonating and we're actually getting more businesses signing up for the program.
Excellent. Thank you. And to follow up to that is, there was also a discussion, I don't know how, I think it's kind of trailed off with all the other shiny things and distractions that have occurred over the course of time, but there was a push at one point to have a, an audit, you know, 8A-wide audit. Has any of our, have any of our, you know, or your clients or constituency been adversely affected by that?
So we have not had any of our participants or we consider alum be affected by an audit. Now, we do have partners that are in the legal field that work with government contractors and they still say that it, it could be coming.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much again for all your good work and to appreciate your time with us here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yes, Ms. June, Ms. June Evans. Thank you. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Run off for me. I'm messing with you. Great presentation. Thank you for the work that you do. I just want to just go back and iterate the revenue generated. These are great numbers. Ninety-five million in, in terms of general revenue. Have there ever been, or if, if not, or if, if it is, thought to having your, your staff team to project what the revenues would look like with, with, with the next two years, you know, ahead? A lot of times, you know, with vision comes, you know, better just business possibilities. And the more, you know, that, you know, your, your revenues are strong, that attracts a lot of people to want to be a part of what you're doing.
As far as have we, because the ninety-five million, those are the revenues of the, of the people that we serve that could we, well, I'm, I'm be honest with you, City Councilmember Truesdale, we would have never thought that what's going on right now, that when we look at our data, that that's what we were going to be able to report. We can try, I just, it's just such difficult times right now. There's, it's like the goalpost is constantly moving for us. But I'll tell you this, what we are doing that could help us to, to try to keep our eye on the prize is that the work that we're doing is really not, it, it, it really doesn't have to only be applied to 8A government contractors. And I'm telling my team and when I meet with Capital One, who's our primary funder, what we do, what we, how we work with the businesses and what we do, that information can be applied to any government contractor, right? Regardless of the set aside or the program that they're in. Those are tools that help your strategy, right? It help, it helps with the business development piece of, of your business. And so if we look at it from that perspective, I will go back and I will try to see if we could try to kind of project if we can keep it in that space. But the only way that I believe we can is if we keep thinking that the best practices that we're building can be applied outside of just the 8A program.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks so very much for coming this evening.
Thank you. Want to make sure I didn't?
Hearing none. Thank you again. At this time, we will move on to item B, the briefing on the 2023 Bowie Racetrack Task Force Report. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Rich Hall, working with Robert Day, are going to come up to the podium there and give you all the briefing and, and make a presentation.
You can do that outstanding and answer any questions.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Richard Hall, Director of Planning Sustainability, here with Mr. Robert Day, as the city manager mentioned. Mr. Day was chairman of the task force for the Bowie Racetrack and the report that was issued and presented to this council just a little over two years ago. And so he was chair of that group and he's also chair of the BAPB and he is now a part of the EDC. So he's a multi-talented individual and we're lucky to have him. So we're going to do a little bit of a, a tag team here and I was not here back then and certainly Mr. Day was. So we want to, basically the task before us was to give you all an overview of the report since it's issued some time ago, like I said, just a little over two years, and take the conversation from there. So.
Thank you.
Great. And I can do this. You mind?
Well, I mean, the background, basically, we, we know that we spent a great deal of time, about a year.
Yes.
Reaching out and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for helping me become chair of the committee. The task force was basically put together to look at what we could do with the, with the Bowie Racetrack. What amenities do we as a community want to see in that space and how would we use it and what we could do? First, I'd like to say thank you to Bowie State and Park and Planning because both of them are great partners. So I think Bowie State is very interested in what we're doing and they want to work with us. And I would like to see that town-gown relationship be built across the board as a continuous thing for the city of Bowie State University. I think it'd be absolutely great. We're talking about a one-hundred-and-eighty-acre space. That's a huge space. This is a massive opportunity for the city of Bowie to make a major change in the recreational opportunities within our city. I guess we can, it's kind of, you know, we stepped through our, our schedule. This was the schedule we had. It was very fluid. It went very well. We had great attendance in all our workshops, all our meetings.
About a year.
And I can tell you, people really got involved in this. So we heard from just about every type of entity in the city, from the horse community to the cricket community who came out and made a big thing. They wanted to be a part of this. But we also have to think about the major partner that we had and that is the residents of the city. And by them coming out and speaking and talking to us and making it clear to us that they wanted to see certain things within, you know, this, this opportunity that we have within this space, you start talking about the different things they wanted, which is connectivity to our trails. They wanted, you know, some kind of conservation area because A, we're right next to the toxin and we want to make sure that we take advantage of that. It's out of determent or anything, we want to take advantage of that. They wanted to be able to spend time there in picnic areas and year-round and have year-round abilities. Not make it possible, okay. And the equestrian community made it very clear that they wanted to still be a part of this. They wanted to help us maintain, one of the themes that we wanted to keep for this space is the equestrian history of Bowie, how it was related to what, you know, has really been built out of the state of Maryland and the racing industry. So they wanted to make sure that they still had the opportunity to be a part of this and it was really clear to us that we needed to listen to them because they were, you know, coming up and showing up and they were talking. They're being part of the thing, part of the discussion. So we started thinking about that and then Bowie State has some, you know, requirements that they would like to have seen meet at this location, from sports fields to possible learning opportunities, which I think is an excellent opportunity, up against some of the neighborhoods that you have where you have, you know, houses right on the edge of, of a property that we would be taking over. I think this is a great opportunity for community gardens, great opportunity for spaces for elders and people of that, and a Bowie State Innovation and Learning Center where we'd be able to learn about gardening and build out, you know, that type of, you know, learning opportunity at this space. You can see we have a ton of different uses that were put there. We looked at just about everything. There, there's so many things, so many opportunities because of the size of the space that we could really do. One of the things we definitely wanted to include in that was our connection to the WBNA Trail. I think that is huge because it, it becomes a destination. We want this to be another destination in Bowie where people will come and be, you know, they'll feel welcome and they'll want to come back over and over again and spend their tax dollars in Bowie somewhere so we can take that money too. We can, I mean, I think they all know about all the different courts and things like that, so, you know, you, you have to look at the whole picture of what we're trying to do here. There is so much that can be built out here. We want to make sure we pay attention to our history. We want to make sure we pay attention to the proper use of the space and building it in such a way where it's not detrimental or causes issues with quality of life to the neighborhoods that are around it. So anything that is a, that is a noise generator or something, or a light generation, the further away from the neighborhoods, the better. So we thought about that also. So a lot of that played into it. And you can go to the next one. I mean, we're just kind of going over this again. I don't want to redo the whole thing, but I think now, you know, we know that coming up here soon is the time that the deed will be turned over to the city. And there are certain things that, you know, we want to push for and we would love to make this happen. I think we have to stay in the game on this. I think we have to be a member of making this happen for the city of Bowie. The due diligence is currently being done. I know there's different projects that have happened already and there's, they're doing sediment studies right now. So I can't really speak to what has been found or what hasn't. I don't know if anything has been found. The, the funding, I don't think we can really speak to. I mean, that's, it's long-term, it's a long-term, big project that will have to be done in phases. This is something that is not going to be done overnight. There may be Bowie State parks that could be done first or the city parks that could be done first. It is a long-term project that we will have to all be at the table working together and an MOU would have to be developed and all of that, so we understand who has what responsibilities. The land transfer, that's a big deal from the, from the current owner to the city. I think, I really think they want to get it off their hands and we, we kind of want it, but we want to make it, you know, we want them to do their due diligence on their side and do as much as possible to make sure that we get the right product from them. Site preparation and maintenance, that's a big deal because once we take it over, we do have to maintain it. So it's something the city will have to think about and how we handle that. But I don't think it's a killer of a question. I think this is something that could be done. And our partners, Bowie State, the community, parking planning, the state, the county, everybody's going to want to be a part of this once they see what can be built there. We just need to make sure they're coming to the table with their, with their checkbook to make sure they can help, to help us as best we can when this is built up. So with that, you know, I think we basically overviewed it. I hope you keep this property in our hands as best as possible and go from there.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Not that way. Let me see if he asked my question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Appreciate it. Love to you. Can we go back quickly to the schematic? And I know it's representational, but if we could go backwards on the slide deck, that'd be great. There we are. Perfect. Any connectivity expected between Saddle Brook East Park and the, the racetrack? They can be maintained as separate?
Saddle Brook East is really county property. It's not part of its property.
But, but there's no, was there, was there any discussion about connectivity between the two?
Parking planning didn't want to have that discussion at the time.
Oh, is that right?
Didn't know exactly.
All right.
You know, they, they didn't want me, I, I'll tell you exactly what we said. I was like, oh, that's a great place for the cricket venue. And they were like, you planning our Space Force? And I was like, ah! But they, they are willing to have that discussion. They think that would be a great addition. It, it's another connection that we can always have. So that space is there, it's not being used to its best right now and they know that. So it didn't, wasn't pulled off of the table, it just wasn't going to be discussed at that time.
Understood. Because in the meantime, we are, we have been working with them on the parcels that are up against the, the waterway there that would be within their specific interest as well.
Yes.
So there may be an opportunity to leverage their interests and, and the broader interests of the community as well.
As you see, we have that kayak and the canoe and kayak access there.
Yeah.
And they, they really wanted to be a part of that because it would be another great amenity to this part of the county.
Thank you again for all your good work and all of your colleagues on the, on the committee that did this and of course, all the people that showed up at the, at the various meetings and participated well. Thank you.
Hearing no other questions. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
No problem at all.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, you had a request, you wanted to bring something up at this time?
Yes, yes. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was shared to us early on as, as a council that the Mill Branch Development was getting some pushback from grocery stores going there. And I would like, I'm not sure if, I would like to make a motion for council to have staff to reach out to Bill Chesley and to try to understand how the city can help to recruit a grocery store in that area of South 301.
Councilmember, I think we could just ask the city manager, I'm going to take up your request.
There's no need for a motion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anderson, sir, I got it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
I'll just add, just so staff knows, they've been getting pushback on some of the adjacent grocery stores like the Fresh Market since that, that just came to Crofton. They said that was too close in proximity. Wegman said they're in Gaimborough, so that was too close in proximity. So they've just been pretty much going down their list and just getting some pushback from different grocery stores saying that's in proximity. So I'm not sure what type of support they might need, but it, it might be helpful to see kind of like where the gaps are and if there's any type of letter that we can issue them in their outreach so that we can get the grocery store that we need there. So that's more context.
All right. Thank you. All right.
kind of like where the gaps are, and if there's any type of letter that we can issue them in their outreach, so that we can get the grocery store that we need there. So that's more context.
Thank you. Hearing none other, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session on the statutory authority of the Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions, Article 3-305B7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, council will adjourn to closed session.